Paul Gaffney?
Yes.
And Ralph Conner here.
Presentation of Town Council recognition, we do have one?
We do. Dr. Tom Gaffney came to see me this past week and brought a donation for the town along with a letter that I'm going to read that accompanied it. Dear Susan Lassard and Bucksport Town officials, like everyone who lives in Maine today, excepting the very few whose ancestors lived in nature here for thousands of years, I left the place of my birth and the generations of family before me with an urgent hope of a better life. My story is both the same and different as anyone who calls Maine home. The history of Maine has a threat of people from away coming to selfishly use the people and the land, whose roots are deep and bound with others in the community. My wife Gretchen and I came to Maine in 1979, finding no future in urban Philadelphia where roots in real community life became postmodern. Urban life demanded surrendering too much while giving too little. For us, our life here began in the St. John Valley. We did not understand at the time beyond a gut feeling how important was our human need for bonds and living tenderly entwined in community. Both Gretchen and I came with wounds and dreams. We would not have come to take after having so much taken from us. We came to given the hope we would be received with loving hearts, and so we were. Gretchen was drawn to nature and identified with paint and animal life in need of protection and appreciation. In return, nature revealed her native artistic gifts to be honed and shared for loving inspiration. I came with a passion that has only grown to find what is remarkable about each human life and how all of us can live in fulfilling, loving relationships with everyone. At the peak of her creativity and loving power, she died in my arms on December 9th, 1997. She left us with inspiration for overcoming hurt by developing and sharing our gifts and love. Gretchen's drive deferred reflection upon her voluminous work. Loving my way through grief climaxed in a showing of some of her art which I matted and framed for the first exhibition at the renovated Alamo in Bucksport from August 15th to September 11th, 1998. Now, as I have finished 36 years of casting seeds of truth about everyone's priceless and equal importance with the sharing of how we all live in loving every moment, it is time to pass along what remains of Gretchen's exhibition, encouraging all to find your own special art and to share it wherever you go in the spirit of loving. You are given this gift for one or more of these three reasons: in celebration of our lives having been rooted together in love, for encouragement of a kindred spirit who will cast these precious seeds without end, or you are a pay-it-forward person in a position of influence, realizing at this time how important it is to do everything together with others in love. Easily, I could give many more of these gifts to people I know. In time, I'll look at the rest of her collection, and I just may. Here's to inspiring goodness, kindness, and caring. In recognition and appreciation of your capable and caring leadership, the good work and service to the citizens of Bucksport by the mayor, Town Council, Town Office, Administrative Staff, and Department Heads, I would like to give to the Town Office a painting of one of Maine's more charismatic plants, the pitcher, completed in 1982 after graduating from the University of Fort Kent with a degree in environmental science with a minor in art. Gretchen was giving herself completely to using her gifts and doing what she loved for the sake of stewardship and benefiting the citizens of Maine. I hope his town servants pause to appreciate this work of art. They will know they are appreciated for who they are and how they serve the community. Thank you, Tom Gaffney. And this is the painting that he's presented to the town that Gretchen had done. So, thank you, Dr. Gaffney, from all of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Next item is considered minutes of previous meetings. We have council minutes from 9:12:19, regulatory review from 9:12:19, infrastructure and property from 9:12:19, and then Town Council minutes from 10:30:14, 11:13:14, 12:04:14, 12:16:14, 12:30:14, 1:29:15, 2:12:15, 2:26:15, 3:12:15, 3:18:15, and 3:26:15.
Motion approved.
Second. A motion to second. We were told that there's only one more bunch of these.
There's one more bunch.
And thank you to getting these out to us, so we'll have them all out there. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Next correspondence, we have the Down East Transportation Ridership for August 2019. That was in everybody's packet. Looked like it was a lot of rides around August there. A letter of thanks for Home Incorporated for the money that we took out and gave to them for services. There's also a report from YMCA and their current operations from Nick Tenosco, and a letter from Gaylord Wood Jr., J.D., regarding TIPS. Have you had a chance to look at any of those? Any comments or questions on any of that stuff? Orders is considered introduced. I don't believe we have any discussion items. First is Infrastructure Committee meeting.
We have two agenda items. First one was a presentation from third-party administrator on health plan of Metavision on a potential new health concept, health plan concept for town employees, and involves a high deductible plan with an HRA fund that the town would provide, obviously the possibility of savings for the town, but also savings for the employee in terms of out-of-pocket expenditures, and this is something that will be reviewed further by the town manager in discussions with the employees going forward. The second item was a discussion of public safety. It was a proposal by the town manager to combine or create a position of Public Safety Director with an Assistant Chief performing the role of the, I'm sorry, with a Deputy Chief for the Fire Department and a Deputy Chief for the Police Department, with some proposals internally with Sergeant David Winchester assuming the role as the Deputy Chief Police and Assistant Chief Mike Denning as the Deputy Chief, the Fire Department, with Police Chief Sean Gigan stepping into the role of Public Safety Director. This is the proposal that she would like to be able to take back and discuss with fire and police personnel and bring back to the full council for a vote on October 24th, and we recommend it as a committee that she be allowed to do that.
Any questions on that? Regulatory review. I chaired that committee, so I'll give a breakdown. We had a request for an abatement of property tax interest. A citizen came to us and asked for a request for an abatement of taxes, of interest, not of the taxes. The taxes have been paid, talked about it, and we're going to allow the abatement, but we're also going to have the town manager come up with a form if somebody has some type of injury or some life event that may help them assist in paying their taxes, making sure that there's a proposal placed. Is that sort of it, Sue? And the second was council rules. We had a continued discussion on the council rules for filling vacancies. My guess is we'll probably bring this back in the next meeting for a resolve or a vote. We had a discussion about filling the vacancy, and it was determined that we will change the, have a 90-day period before an election to fill it, and we're going to talk about have a choice of whether we fill it by the person that was the next vote getter on the election from the previous election, or if we're going to have it by the nomination of the council. So, we will come back forward with one of those proposals. And that is all we had for regulatory review. Any questions on that? Next item is Eagle Scout project from Zachary Erickson. I believe Mr. Erickson is here.
Yes.
Come on right up here, ma'am.
Okay. Hello, my name is Zachary Erickson. I have a proposal for an Eagle Scout project, and I am seeking approval from the Town Council. So, some of the things that I'd like to do is, so first off, I'm doing an Eagle Scout project for the Silver Lake Trails, and what I would like to do is get rid of some of the brush around and all the weeds on the campground, and I would like to flatten up the ground so that you won't be tumbling in your sleeping bag, and also build a picnic table and put it in so you can have a place to sit, and do, upgrade the fire circle and put at least a 10-foot diameter around it of non-burnable material, probably gravel, and I think that's it.
So, you're asking for permission to be able to do that?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Good luck with that. Next item is survey results, Town Office hours.
Okay, there was a memo that I had included, posted on the, it's posted on the Town Office website. It's under this, it's right there. And the purpose of it was to discuss the proposal to change the Town Office hours from eight to 4:30 Monday through Friday to 7:30 to 5:30 Monday through Thursday. The town, our current hours of operation make it difficult for people who work outside of the community to make it in when we're open, since we're open from eight to 4:30 when most people work. I brought this idea to the Infrastructure Committee some time ago and indicated that I would like to do a survey, and so we sent a survey to every postal address in Bucksport. 2,516 postal addresses in Bucksport, and every household received a survey. We received 375 surveys in response, a 14.9% survey rate. External survey results generally, external meaning that you send outside of your organization, tend to get a 10 to 15% return rate. This was at the upper end of that. 72% of the people who responded indicated a preference for changing the hours. I went back over our business transactions over the past year to analyze what days are. Our busiest day for transactions in Bucksport is Mondays. That's the highest number of transactions are conducted on Mondays. And the other thing I did was I looked up the statistical significance of this result in terms of probability, which is that with a population of 2,500, the number of responses that we receive, the 375, gives you a 95% statistical probability that if you had received responses from everyone, it would be in a similar pattern, that that's where that goes. But, as I said, the cost savings are not huge. They're related to not having the cleaning service one day a week. They are related to the cost of not having this building open another day a week, and the use of electricity and heat and air conditioning and all those kind of things that are used during that service. But I also recognize that it's a change, and in my defense in bringing this up, when the council hired me, you asked me to look at how we do business and see if there were ways that we could do it better or in service to people. And while it can be argued that being closed Friday could be difficult, being open earlier and later can also be helpful to many who currently can't access our services. So, my request is that after the process we've been through, that we be allowed to give this a trial and see how, and when I say trial, it can't be two weeks because that's not enough time to establish a habit, but six months to a year to see how this might work, I think, would be reasonable.
All right. We have a resolve coming up, so we can have discussion when we have the resolve. Item eight is pool committee.
There's a referendum question out there about a pool. And in anticipation of providing a better number than the number that's on there, I spoke with Counsel Keane, who indicated that he would be willing to serve sort of as a conduit for this, but would like to establish a committee to look at this pool project and do some preliminary work to better assess the current condition of what is maybe through some pit testing and other things that our public works or others could do to be better prepared if this referendum does move forward, to be, have a, so that the pool could be done if it were voted for by next spring at considerably less than a million dollars. But Counsel Keane and I had discussed the idea that this would be, it would be better than waiting, that if there was a committee of people looking at how to move this forward for information, that it would be advantageous for us at this time.
What do you look at the makeup of this committee as?
I would think of a few citizens at large and maybe a council member, because I'm only a temporary council member here, so I'm just volunteering.
So, you'd be the citizen at large afterwards.
I'm just volunteering my time to kind of, you know, chairman of the committee or whatever.
Sure.
I have a little bit of experience with piping and various things like that as being an engineer, so.
Any thoughts or? Any volunteers for this committee?
I have no problem volunteering. I just, I would like it stated for the record that I live about 150 feet from this pool, and I also have a four-year-old daughter, so I have a vested interest in seeing, as long as everybody's okay with those two facts, then.
There's going to be a vote before you have anything.
No, I know, but again, you know how I am about perception. As long as everybody's okay with that, then I would be happy to serve.
Then I can give a couple of thoughts.
No.
But we also need to involve the wives.
Yes, yes. And get a couple of citizens at large.
If anybody's interested to stop in the Town Office, then I'll let you convene.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to, you know, form the committee as soon as possible and maybe have some preliminary thoughts available before the election.
But once you get your folks, then you guys can say that. Any comments from the public on that one?
One of the things that didn't come up the other night on the candidate's forum, and I'm probably wrong, but part of the reason for having not to exceed number that high was so that we didn't have to come back to the, back to the town again if, you know, rather than putting it, say, 500,000, if it was 600,000, we'd have to come back after a vote, right?
And the estimate that was provided by the pool company was purely a per-square-foot price times the number of feet involved with X ingredients that may or may not entirely be required. So, that, but yes, the bottom line is if a referendum question has a number in it, the entire cost of the project, engineering, construction, we don't divide them up to try and get around it. You can't go beyond that number, and if it did, then the project would not be able to keep going.
You know, Buer has a similar pool that they, I guess, rebuilt not too long ago. I'd like to talk with some people up there to get some thoughts on how they went about it, you know. Do we really want to have a wholesale change in the design of the pool, or try to, you know, repair and improve what's there? You know, those are the questions I think a committee could come back and maybe have some guidelines prior to the vote.
Is that something you think that you could get back here on the 24th in our next meeting?
I'm going to try.
Thank you.
No pressure.
Thank you. All right. Item eight is agenda items. The first one's to approve resolve 2016 to approve a change to the Town Office business hours effective November 4th, 2019.
Motion approved.
There's a motion, and a second. Anything from the public on this? Sir?
You, Jim Marsh, New York City, you stated that the most busiest day is on Monday.
That's correct.
In those statistics, did you determine what was your least busy day?
I think Wednesday. Well, the least number currently, the least number of transactions, I believe, was on a Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
I know there's a motion in a second. I'm just curious if we could add language to that where the town manager suggested a trial, that maybe there's a trial period on this that doesn't exceed one year.
Want to adjust your motion?
I adjust my motion to that reading?
With that being said, is there anything else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Paul Rehobst, Bucksport. The, I have a concern, the message that we're sending to the folks, the town's been on a real upswing, and I think if someone's going to be calling in and the phone's not going to be answered on a particular day, that's the start of my concern. The, I under, I think the survey was done when the weather was good, the hours were longer, the, you know, right now, we're getting into daylight disappearing at 6 o'clock, and before we know it, in the middle of December, it'll be 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and it'll be pitch black around here, and cutting back on the days. The other thing is, what happens to our code enforcement officer, our economic development? Are they also going to have the same days off? The point being that, again, getting to the progress that the town has made, having access five days a week to the economic development fellow, if they come in and work, they'll get a lot of work done because they won't be able to answer the phone. From what I understand, the crew upstairs answers the phone and then passes them down to those individuals. So, just something to think about that, you know. Anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Anybody else? Someone have a hand up? Yes, sir.
Don White, Town Farm Road. Is the driving force economics here, is that what I, the reason for going to a four-day work week situation?
I think part of it was the hours that people could actually get service.
The hours that could be expanded for people. How many people are not town people who use the Town Office? So, there are people coming through, business people, et cetera, who want access to the town. Is there any, anybody have a thought about that?
I don't have an answer to that.
I mean, if you.
I don't know what kind of, what.
What, do people come in, just come in off the, from other towns, come in to talk to people in Bucksport, talk to business, or to whatever they have? Is that a function that the Town Office sees a lot? I mean, it's a potentially closing off one day a week for outside thing. I don't know. As a worker, I would love this idea. I think it's terrific, and I like expanded hours, but it also, as a consumer, it's tight there with not, with being closed a day. It's a difficult situation, and it's a, I think, there's pros and cons in all of it. But I did cross my mind that there's other people, not just townspeople, that are affected by this.
Thank you. President of the Council?
I think Sue did a great job with the survey. There are many towns our size that do this. I work in two separate counties in Scott and Piscataquis, and those days that, you know, a lot of the towns that I go to do similar things. For me, my wife and I, we work at a time where those are the times that the Town Office is open. So, I agree with the fact that we have to take time off to come to the Town Office, register our cars, whatever. Now, with expanded hours, we can make it in time, you know, to get those things done. I think it's a great idea. Thank you for, you know, for the work you put in on.
Anybody else, Ralph?
Well, I think one key part of this proposal is also what Paul suggested we add was one year, at least a year. If things don't work out, we have, you know, too many negative complaints about it, we can revisit it, but it will give us a good chance to see, because change is difficult. And I'm sure other communities that went to this, there was a period of change, but they adjusted, and it may be working out fine now, but it does take a while to get used to any change, and, but we can always revisit.
The other thing that I talked to the office staff about was recording customer contact prior to eight and between 4:30 and 5:30 moving forward if this was adopted, so that after a period of evaluation, that there would be a way to look at how many people were taking advantage of this, you know, the fact that someone was there to answer the phone or to be there in person afterwards, and that would provide more evidence one way or the other about whether this is feasible on an ongoing basis.
And I think that'll be some interesting information that I think, you know, three months, six months, we can take a look at it as we're going forward, just to see where it's at and see what the change is.
What is the second most busiest day?
Friday.
Okay. One other thing, back, that'll only be three, four, five years ago, we changed the hours in the Town Office because they said that there was very little activity after 4:30 in the afternoon. So, the council at that time approved them all to work the same amount of hours or the same schedule. So, I'm not 100% convinced that they'll be happy with it, so I guess that's what the trial period will verify. But I guess the salary people work 40 hours a week, and the hourly people work 37 and a half. So, how is, I just, I don't know how all that's going to jive. Do the salary people have an hour off for lunch? Is that building in their schedule? How long a lunch period is the hourly folks going to have? I heard they might do a half hour. I mean, are they even going to be able to get home in a half hour? So, I have some questions around it, and, you know, like I said, we changed the hours three or four years ago. Maybe it was, maybe it was longer than that because they didn't think there was any activity after 4:30 in the afternoon, so. A trial and getting more data, I would definitely support that.
I'm in support of that, too. I'm kind of on the same page with you that, I don't know how I feel about the actual hours that we're saying that we want to do. I think that there are some other ways to go about it, too, but I think the trial period's important. That way, we can, we can look at it, like you said, and come back to it if we need to.
Any else, Paul?
Just, I guess I would add, I mean, statistically, I mean, the fact that we received that many responses, it obviously shows the interest. That is honestly statistically quite impressive. Second of all, the fact that 72% of the people that responded, took the time to respond to the survey, indicated that they would be in favor of a change. That, I think, is enough of, for lack of a better word, mandate, that you might see some citizen behavior change based on what the new hours are. Given, with that in mind, plus the trial period, that gives the town manager the flexibility to pull back if they're seeing something that just isn't working, but it gives us a full year to analyze that data and revisit this. That's my thought process on this and why I support it.
Anything else?
Code enforcement? Mr. Rams and Mr. White, make up.
Mr. Rams and Mr. White make a valid concern about us not, me and Rich not being here on Friday. I can't speak for Rich, but I don't really get days off. I deal with contractors on Saturday, Sunday. Whatever day they need me, I go and I do what they need, and that won't change. So, if they call me and they want inspections on Friday or they need to meet with me on Friday, then I'll still meet with them on Friday. I may not be in my office, but they'll have my phone number and they reach me. So, I'm sure Rich probably the same way. If they needed to speak with him, they needed to meet with him, he'd do it. So, I don't think that will affect my position as far as the contractors are concerned. But...
Thank you.
Just my two cents.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I am pleased to approve, resolve 2017 to approve pay requisition 32 for the sewer treatment plant project. We have a motion and a second. Anything from the public on this?
This is for the solar array. If you've been keeping track of what's going on at the sewer treatment facility, that, this is the first payment on that.
Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. I have seized to approve, resolve 2018 to approve the acceptance of assistance of firefighters grant in the amount of $146,666.66. Michael.
Good evening. This grant was put in by retiring fire chief Craig Bowden. He was quite happy. I called him when we got this grant after, we got a call from Susan Collins' office to let him know that it did pass and we got it. So, basically what this grant is, it's for Scott air packs that we wear for firefighting. It requires a 5% match, which is roughly $7,333. Each, well, the grant includes 19 Scott packs, one fit test machine, which is used for fit testing of the face piece, and a rapid intervention pack or a RIT pack that we use for rescue if need be. So, included in that, each pack, we get one mask and two bottles. So, these bottles and packs, after 15 years, need to be replaced. All our packs are at that end stage of, we needed to have them replaced. I believe we had it in the capital improvement plan just in case this grant did not go through, so.
That's going to be $146,000 off your capital improvement? I'm joking.
Well, the, actually, truthfully, if the town were to take, to replace all 19 at the same time, that would be the cost, and the fit test machine, that would be the cost to the...
The fit test machine is around $11,000, so it's quite pricey.
So, yes, it's a significant savings.
I guess that's what I meant.
So that funds for that capital improvement reserve can be redirected towards other needs.
We have a motion and a second. Anything further from the public on this?
And just so, so we're replacing all the old ones that are all 15 years old?
Yep, everything.
So, these should be good for another 10 years or so?
15.
15 years?
15.
Start right in your grant.
Yep.
You'll still be here.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Resignations and appointments and stuff. We've got an appointment of Jacob Grant as warden for the November 5th, 2019 election.
Motion approved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Want to oppose that, Jacob? You all set? All those in favor? Oh, I'll get to it, I'll get to it, I'll get to it. Do we need to sign the war for November 5th? That's part of this? It's just a motion to approve? We need that?
Motion approved?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. The appointment of Caitlin Howlett as town assessor.
Yes, I would like to introduce you all to Caitlin Howlett, who is our new assessor. She started work Monday and hasn't run screaming from the building. So, I think we're doing well thus far. Caitlin, could you come up and...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, what, real quick, where are you from? How long you been doing this stuff?
I live in Hampden, and I've been working for, as assistant to the town assessor, in Orinah for three years.
And now you're going to move to Bucksport? Right?
Maybe, we'll see.
Congratulations and thank you and good luck, and we'll see you around, okay?
I'm sure. Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Motion to approve it?
Second.
I don't think we need to approve that one.
We need to appoint as the assessor.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Congratulations. Item 10 is quick claims. We have a sewer lien discharge, map 33, lot 5, Daryl Howard and Stephanie Howard.
Motion approved?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
This is one that clearly means from 2013 to 2000. I'm excited about that one.
Town manager report.
I have been notified by Ken Foster that the Riverview Cemetery will be continuing its own ownership care and maintenance and is withdrawing its request that the town consider taking over the cemetery. He indicated that a number of volunteers had stepped forward to take on the management of it and that there was a desire on the part of lot owners for the cemetery to stay under the ownership direction of the association. So, although we had an initial presentation by Mr. Foster asking if the town would consider that, that has been withdrawn. In response to a question by Councilor Carmichael, I researched the topic of remote participation at meetings. And although there have been efforts at the legislative level to allow remote participation at meetings of local elected appointed officials, none of the legislation was successful. And at this time, according to Maine Musical Association, there is no clear legal authority for members of local boards elected or appointed to participate in meetings remotely by any means. So, for the time being, that, unless the legislature makes changes, that is not an option for us. There will be a special planning board meeting on Tuesday, October 29th, for subdivision amendment for the AIM subdivision at the former mill site. The purpose of the amendment is to redraw the lines between lots 1 and 3 to facilitate the sale of the power plant lot and include connections all the way to the substation. The date of sale of the power plant has been set as November 1st of 2019. The date when the big stack is set to come down has been narrowed to a window between October 25th through the end of the month. As soon as they have a definite date and time, we will arrange for an event at Fort Knox. I thought I had a date and time, and then today it slid. So, we will have it in time for people to know when they can go to the fort for viewing. I would like to thank the town council for the opportunity to attend the Heart and Soul Coaches Champion Gathering in Essex, Vermont, from September 26th to the 28th. It was a great event. Bucksport was well represented with John Powell and Melissa Lalland attending, as well as Nancy Hanz and myself and my husband Dan. We will tell you that Bucksport is seen as rock stars in the heart and soul community in terms of the work this community has done to move itself forward following the closure of the mill. I also want to thank the Enterprise, RSU 25, and Reverend York for their efforts related to the candidate forum held earlier this week. A link to the video recording of the event is now posted on the front page of the town's website at bucksportmain.gov and on the Town of Bucksport's Facebook page for anyone who wishes to get the candidates, get to know their candidates and their views better. And I would encourage you all to watch it. And what I was most encouraged by was the article in the Enterprise today that discussed the very civil and respectful way that all the candidates conducted themselves at this candidate forum. And I am proud to say that that's a hallmark of Bucksport and how people here interact with each other. And I think we'll be well-served. Congratulations and thanks to the local businesses who participated in Maine Craft Weekend this past weekend. Bucksport was featured in Down East Magazine as a participating community. And the Bucksport Bay Area Chamber of Commerce is seeking volunteers to help with Ghostport activities on October 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And anyone who's interested in helping can contact Alicia or Leslie at the chamber. And finally, absentee ballots are available at the town office. Please come and get one or come to the polls on the 5th.
Do you have anything?
Mine had, when it comes up, it was a short quote, "That's a legend."
All right. Thank you, Sue. We've got a couple of public hearings and license renewals. We'll do the license renewals first. First one is from Cali Fortune Incorporated doing business at Bucksport House of Pizza.
Motion approved?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor? Opposed? And then second, we have a license application for the Bucksport Area Chamber of Commerce to hold Ghostport. Richard.
Hello. May I approach, please? Okay, thanks a lot.
Approach me?
Oh, yeah. This is a flyer for Ghostport. It is taking place on Saturday, October 19th, from 10:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. This is the 11th year of Ghostport. The chamber puts on this event. It's very well attended. It starts with a children's parade at 10:00 o'clock. Parade lasts roughly about 15 minutes down Main Street. You've got trebuchet launching, where pumpkins go flying into the river. Breakfast with the witches this year. There's a zombie fun run. Please, everybody in town, sign up and run. My daughter's in that graduating class that'll be benefiting from it. Thank you. Coffin registration. There's a coffin race that takes place on Main Street. Looking for roughly two hours to have the street shut down so that the coffins can be placed, registration can happen, run the race up and down Main Street, and then call it good from there. And then we'll end the night with some different activities at different areas. I know Verona Wine Design's going to have some scary trivia, so please visit Mike and Colleen that night. The one thing that I see missing that, no, I'm sorry, that ended, never mind. But other than that, you have it there. Please, no one make the rumor that Stephen King's going to the fort. We don't need that traffic backed up again. He will not be there. And other than that, we'd just like you to support in hosting Ghostport, please.
Are you running the coffin, right?
Yeah.
Chief, are you prepared to close the road?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have a motion to approve and a second. Anything further from the public? Have a great day, hopefully so, everybody please attend. It'll be fun. See you. All those in favor? Motion passes. Okay, so we've got a couple of public hearings. I'll open a public hearing for the general assistance ordinance appendices A through D and appendix H. They comments on the general assistance changes. We have to do this every year? Comments? Close the public hearing. How would the council like that?
Motion approved?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Open a public hearing on the fee ordinance amendments. Anything from the public on the fee ordinance? We've worked on this, I think, for three years. Any questions on that or where we're at with that?
Motion approved.
Public hearing's closed? David taught me well how to do that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Third one is the elimination of Verso's TIFs. Anything from town manager on this, please?
Yes, there is. In 2015, when AIM acquired the former mill site, there was, when I came to town in August, there was an ongoing discussion about the payment of the second half of a credit enhancement agreement on two separate TIFs that were on that parcel. And the resolution of that was that the town was legally obligated to pay one of those and not the other. And at the time that happened, there was a resolution done by the council at the time and AIM indicating that the credit enhancement agreements were done from that point forward, that there would be no further payments from the TIF and that the TIFs would be extinguished. And the first half got done, which is the credit enhancement agreements were nullified and there have been no, there were no additional payments. But the town didn't go the next step, which was to post for a public hearing for the elimination of the TIFs themselves, which is the areas on the earth where these, that are covered by this tax increment financing. And so, this hearing tonight is to eliminate those two TIF parcels that are currently identified on that mill site that were scheduled to run through 2031 or 41. But anyway, it eliminates, it then becomes a blank slate for the TIF that was more recently approved for the whole ocean's part of that property. But it legally eliminates the Verso TIFs that are gone. That's the purpose of this hearing.
One of those TIFs were for the gas turbine facility, right? And one was for the wood yard.
I think one was...
I thought one was for the gas turbine facility, no?
No, there was, I believe the biomass was involved in one of them. But the gas, they were not in the area where the turbine is. There's been no, there's been no payments or anything. They're not, the area that is defined by these TIFs is currently empty. I mean, it's currently got nothing on it, you know? All those things were removed.
Maybe the one on the gas turbine had already run out.
Anything further? Close the public hearing. How would the council like that?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is, discussion items not on the agenda for the council and the public. Anything from the public tonight? Nothing from the public? Anything from the council?
I have one thing. We've got a $3 million bond, and I'd like, at the next council meeting, if we could have a better idea of what we're going to be spending that on. That last thing, it looks like we've already done some of that work and...
There's a considerable amount of work, and I had that conversation today. But for the next council meeting and for an article in the Enterprise, not an advocacy piece, simply an explanation of what is involved on both of these bond issues so that people have information on what's covered.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
The, we had a discussion in the last meetings in a presentation on the solar array potential. What's the next step in terms of gathering information just so we can present it to the council? And what do we need to do from a council standpoint?
Well, we have, it should be, I guess the answer is it should be agended in a committee environment for you to, there have been other entities other than Sun Dog who have also reached out with interest on that former landfill site. So, a meeting at which you look at what the basic three options are, lease, do it yourself or have a community system, and the costs associated and benefits associated with each would. And following that, I think you'll be faced with an RFP process to solicit proposals because now that the laws have changed, there's a good deal of interest in locating these sites and whether you want to be a landholder who... sites, and whether you want to be a landholder who just leases it and hands off the solar, or you want something more involved, will depend on what your RFP looks like.
Would we set that up for a meeting down there? Would that be infrastructure?
That's infrastructure.
I'd like to thank David for volunteering. Thank you for accepting the nomination for a couple meetings. Anything else? Outcoming public hearings or committee assignments? Do we want to try and get something on that committee thing next time, or...
Is it going to take a couple meetings, or...
We can have an infrastructure committee meeting at the, for the next one to...
Sort of lay us some groundwork, maybe?
6:00, yeah.
Is that, anything else?
It's the 24th?
24th, 6. Any other committees? I don't think so. All right, item 15, adjournment. We should do adjourn, motion in a second. All those in favor? Motion passes.